Okay.
All right, then I will call the meeting of the Board of Education in order and please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America. To the Republic.
Republic.
To stand.
Stand.
A nation.
Under God.
Invisible.
For taking all.
Thank you for that flag. If Mrs. Gibson. Yep. All right, if we can begin, please, with a moment of silence for the following remark. Conbridge, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District for Marcia Wing. A graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District and for Margaret Nina Rotella. A former employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Okay, thank you. For presentations today, we have Office Personnel Appreciation Day. So I am going to read to you the proclamation that the Board of Education is hopefully going to approve. Throughout history, office personnel has had an impact on the district's students and community. They work for the well-being, welfare, and future of our children. This awesome responsibility is accepted with commitment, dedication, and even love. Because of the complexity and diversity of their role, they must be flexible, resourceful, positive, and patient. The office personnel of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber. Who have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive the quality education. To honor the office personnel of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments and efforts on behalf of our communities. Most valuable resources are children. I, while for Folly, a president of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District. On behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude. Hereby declare April 22nd, 2020 as Office Personnel Appreciation Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. And if I could get just a, make that motion a second, we can declare that day. Second from Mark Thorne. Discussion. Call in favor.
Hi.
Hi. Posed, that is passed, so April 22nd is Office Personnel Appreciation Day in the North Syracuse Central School District. Anybody? Trying to make comments?
I would just like to make a comment that our office personnel have not missed a beat in this transition to the distance learning. And they have really made our district office, our buildings, our transportation, our MNO office run seamlessly in this new environment. And they need to be recognized because they are the, what makes us look good. They are the bread and butter and they keep us organized, they keep us on, on task with things. And they didn't miss a beat in this quick transition. And I want to compliment them for all their efforts.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have another series of proclamations, so I'm going to read, these are all grouped together, I'm going to read this for you. Throughout history, teachers, school nurses, teaching assistants, transportation personnel, and teacher aides have had an impact on the district's students and community. They work for the well-being, welfare, and future of our children. This awesome responsibility is accepted with commitment, dedication, and even love. Because of the complexity and diversity of their role, most flexible, resourceful, positive, and patient. The two, school nurses, teaching assistants, transportation personnel, and teaching aides of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber. Who have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive quality education. To honor the teachers, school nurses, teaching assistants, transportation personnel, and teacher aides of the North Syracuse Central. And their accomplishments and efforts on behalf of our communities' most valuable resources are children. I, while for Folly, a president of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board. Bless our deepest gratitude and hereby declare the following. May 5th, 2020 as Teacher Appreciation Day. May 6th, 2020 as School Nurse Appreciation Day. May 7th of 2020 as Transportation Personnel Appreciation Day. May 12th, 2020 as Teaching Assistant Appreciation Day. And May 19th, 2020 as Teacher Aid Appreciation Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. So I recommend the action to declare those days. As I just put forward as appreciation days for those groups aforementioned. And I make that motion as for a second. Second from George Harrington. And we'll just again do a roll, we won't do a roll call here yet, just all in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Most in, that motion is carried. And comments there? I, I mean, I will just say, I don't even know what words I would have for all these groups we mentioned today. What they've done to continue with the education of our students during this. I don't even know what to call it during this ordeal. It's, I hate to use the old cliche, kind of building the airplane as we're flying it, but this is, again, new ground, people have stepped up. And we're going to make it through this, but this has been difficult, and I know these people have all. Put forth a lot of effort, and in many cases, efforts in areas that were not comfortable, not easy. But I do sincerely thank everybody out there. For that, all these groups. Okay. We have next. A budget present, presentation, so I will pull it up, Mr. Keegan.
I'm going to turn it over to Dan to take us through.
Okay. So can everyone see that presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
So what we'll do is, the first slide, I want to just back us up and just go back to where we started. So that everyone just knows that we started our budget presentations back in February. And we had a $4.7 million deficit. Some of the things that we were working on along the way was, we've committed for the last few years, a lot of resources for our special education model. Also, our middle school schedule, we've negotiated a lot of contractual issues. And on March 16th. When we looked at that time, we were at about a $3.1 million deficit. Because we made some adjustments to some things year-to-date. Increased by pilots, looked at sales tax, we looked at our interest in Medicaid. We recommended the use of additional fund balance and reserves only a one time. To either increase revenues or find cost efficiencies. And then on April 6th, the budget reflected the final New York State aid, bringing us back to a $4 million deficit. New York had created a pandemic adjustment, a reduction in the state aid by about $1.4 million. But then the federal government, through the federal cares restoration, adjusted for the pandemic by that same amount of 1.4 million. So basically, it was a wash. North Syracuse Central School District Foundation aid. Will equal back to 2019, 20 amount, so there was no increase. And New York has told us that they may be making quarterly adjustments throughout this next school year. So since February, we've been identifying areas where the budget reductions can be made that will minimize the negative impact on students and staff. So we have some essential questions regarding the deficit, and so some questions were asked about North Syracuse and their spending. Do we spend too much for per pupil, our administrative ratios? Are the district's revenues inadequate, state aid, local school tax levy? So I think Don has gone through this before, and this slide lets us know that we are 18th out of 23 districts. As far as our spending per pupil, so 17 other districts spend more per pupil than North Syracuse. So we are not overspending each year on our students. Next slide is an important slide, Don looking at forecast five. The green bar shows that we had, at the time, 83, 83 as far as our enrollment, and that includes Main Street. But we currently have, if you look in the, in the top middle of the green bar, 30.1 administrators. That includes Don, myself, Chris, Jason, for all the administrators in the district. And if you look at the blue bar immediately to the left of North Syracuse is green. That bar is almost at 7,000 students for their enrollment. So we're at least 13,000, 1,300 students more, but they have 39.5 administrators in that district. Another district, all the way to the far left on this graph, it shows they have about 5,500 students as far as their enrollment. But if you look at the, the dot up above that bar, they have 34 administrators. And so they have almost 3,000 students less in, again, more administration. So we are not overspending in that area as well. If you come back to this, come down to this slide, and again, the bottom right-hand corner. This year, if we had gotten the necessary foundation aid, this is the shortfall of, there's 10,200,000. We, we wouldn't have a deficit at all, we would be more than just fine. But again, over time, that shortfall is really having its impact. This next slide, and we are the second bar there, and in green, it just shows that we're funded by the state 82%. And there's the bar immediately to the right of us that has 90% of their funding in aid. If we were funded at 90%, we wouldn't have a shortfall as well. There is a line graph also that goes through all the bars. And if you look at where our point is, says 0.625. We are the second poorest in comparison to these similar school districts as far as our wealth ratio. So our wealth ratio is not that high, and yet we're not funded as much as some other schools that have a higher wealth ratio. So where does that bring us? If you look to the bottom third of this, there's a piece of this that I referenced, and it's bold, in bold, it talks about the pandemic adjustment. And the pandemic adjustment is how much the state took from us in 1.4 million due to the situation due to the pandemic. And so what the federal government did, and it's federal cares restoration, they just took that number and matched it and gave us back that 1.4. So there was a wash, we really didn't get anything more, it just took away the negative impact of the pandemic adjustment. This slide shows tax on true value. It shows that per thousand, North Syracuse taxing these people at $23.78 per thousand. And there are some districts that have higher tax per thousand and some that have less. So it looks like we're right in the middle there at the median. So that's just a graph that lets you know where we stand in relationship to several other districts around us. Now, at the tax cap calculation, and we've gone through some of these iterations. But if you go to the most important, where at the bottom, the tax levy, we're looking to go out at a tax levy of 2.59. And just a footnote, last year, that tax levy was 2.77. And this tax levy increase on homes 3,000, 100,000 is before star. So this is the one that always people take a second look at. So in Cicero and Salina, we are assessed at full value. So a $100,000 house, you have the full value assessment. But clay is a little bit different. Clay is not assessed at, at full value, and what it comes down to per $100,000 house. It's $605.42 is where their tax, sorry, I said 100,000 per thousand, my, my correction. So one of the things that we've been looking at, as we've been trying to put a budget together, is what are some of the things that we value? And in looking at some of the medium-term expenditures, we've had to look at our student-to-teacher ratios. We've looked hard at what we're doing and providing professional development for our teachers, especially our newer probationary teachers. We've been looking at the current model in special education that we've been doing for the last four years. We've been looking at our curriculum materials and also our vendors and who we've been working with. And is there any where we can make some savings there? We've been looking hard at our IT and our support and our delivery. IT has really come through for us during this time, and we're just reviewing every area within the organization. Scheduling efficiencies, looking at shared staff and what we're doing across the district. And is there any way to have any efficient or more efficient ways in scheduling that will help us out? And the last bullet point is our non-instructional operations. So those operations that are not directly in the classroom in front of students and taking a look at all areas that are not instructional. So one of the thing, areas that we had talked about as far as trying to support things for Vision 2020. We've known that the high school has had a need, and there's a lot of things that the deans were working on and with some areas. So we're looking at possibly an administrative assistant for student support. Some areas for students where there was a mastermind competition as well as unified bowling. We already have unified basketball, so unified bowling would help support those students with disabilities. Grade seven teachers due to enrollment at Gillette, also with ENL, there's been some growth there. And so looking to meet the state mandates in regard to our, our ENL students. Looking at the social worker at Allen Road and at Cicero. They have been operating with a .5 person in those areas for student support. So there is an asterisk next to that, and hiring this position allows the counselor who previously serviced both to service at Cicero L. And then also making sure that Allen Road has a 1.0 person, so that there's always someone that's a go-to. Some of the other areas that we've been looking at is, we've, looking at the Bear Road project and relocating about 220 students to maybe 240 students to Lake Shore. With that increased number of students in one building, we felt it would be necessary to possibly have a social worker, the additional .5 of a social worker. To help meet the social emotional needs of students. Also due to renovation temporarily, maybe putting a security guard at Lake Shore because of the increased number of students in one building. And again, also due to the, the volume of students that may be there, is putting an administrative intern at Lake Shore. And again, all these are, says with the asterisk, temporarily required due to the Bear Road construction. Right under that, we looked at a nurse, when you're dealing with more than 700 students and with the increased needs of students nowadays. Looking to provide some additional nursing need over at Lake Shore at this time. And the last one on this list, if you've ever been in the building during lunchtime in an elementary school. If you try to schedule that with 700-plus students and the teacher aides that are supervising, looking at additional .5 increase to service the Lake Shore increase due to the Bear Road construction. So vehicle bonding, one of the things that we've tried to make sure that we've been pretty successful at is not letting our fleet get too old. One of the things that happens with our buses, if you let them get too old and don't constantly look to create new buses. You're paying more for the repair and maintenance of buses that get over 10 years old. So we're looking at adding some more buses and purchasing buses that run on, on gasoline instead of diesel. This will help reduce the cost of repairs. And so we're looking at 1065 passenger buses. But one of the things I want to make sure everyone understands is, all of these transportation purchases, we get transportation aid at 78%. So that's the reason, it's not like we're just purchasing things and not having them be aidable. Don, if, can you comment on anything regarding transportation and the aid?
Just, just that with the aid rate that we get, we would really almost be foolish if we didn't keep our fleet current. The reliability of the fleet is just so important when we're triple tripping our kids. And, and so this has been a, this practice was in place long before I got here, and I think North Syracuse has done a great job of having a reliable fleet. And our, our schools and our students have been served well, and I think it's very economical.
So the tax impact after transaid is approximately $2,038 per year per house assessed at $100,000 before star. So a summary and conclusion is that we still have work to do to finalize the budget. We're looking at adopting our budget at the May 11th board meeting. I was looking to push that back, and many other districts did the same. The reason for that is, we are still working with our board budget subcommittee, looking at all avenues and areas within the organization. We're looking at continuing to evaluate shared staff, but pushing things back to the May 11th. We've had meetings and contact with Congressman Katko, Rachel May, have met with superintendents and spoken with superintendents. They are still lobbying to get some more federal aid for the, the superintendents and districts. So giving them also some time to, to do that was also going to be helpful for us.
And Al Sturphy and Pam Hunter have just been wonderful advocates for the district as well, and so our, our fingers are crossed that they can make something happen for us.
Thank you, Don. And so we're also trying to have some more communication between our principals, directors, our union leaders. Looking at all avenues within the budget and staffing issues. So that's kind of an overview, but again, our, our budget board subcommittee will be sitting with us in another week. Trying to look at and ask questions and get down to the nitty-gritty. And so when we get back to the next board meeting, we will put, present to you a budget. In order to meet the needs of all of our students and so that it's balanced. Are there any questions that we could answer?
I, I have some comments, there might be a question in there, but I, if I go back, and you don't have to move back to the first slide, but you started the questions that were posed. Are we spending the appropriate amount, and then we come through and. I mean, apparently, it's pretty clear that we're not, when we look at, we're ranking 633 out of what, somewhere north of 700 school districts in the state of New York?
677, Don?
Yes, that's the number of districts that reported in this data, 677.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's pretty bad, but then when you look at where we fall, kind of in the lower half of our BOCs for per pupil spending. And then I turn around and we look at the tax on true value, we're right smack in the middle, all this doesn't add up to me. In other words, I feel like we're taxing our constituents as much as we can, being in the middle is responsible, but we're not getting out of it what we need to get out of it. And it all comes back to state aid, am I incorrect on that?
You are correct.
You are correct.
Fundamental revenue problem, not an expenditure problem.
I mean, the, long-term, you have that, you know, you wrote down long-term on that slide before the summary. Long-term, if we don't have one of those three bullet points that you have there, we don't address those, we're going to be. Getting in a deeper and deeper situation is my fear.
What has been explained at, at some time is many school district in New York State in the example is, could be heading towards a waterfall. Some may be getting towards that waterfall sooner than others. But eventually, with this model and how we're funded, eventually, we will all hit that waterfall. And so what will need to happen at some point is that third bullet point under long-term. And have to consider possibly going above the tax cap.
So right now, yeah, right now, in the immediate future, I mean, I read, I think Connie sent us an email with the governor's comments about. If we don't get more federal aid, we're going to be looking at half of state aid. I mean, that's, I mean, I can't even digest that when I read that. So I mean, the federal government needs to come through, and every state's in this situation, what I've been reading. And then down the road, it's the, it's been right back to the foundation aid formula. So I know in the near term, Governor Keck or Governor Ho.
Bomo.
Don Katko, is what I'm trying to say, our congressperson needs to advocate for us big time, and of course, our two senators in the state of New York.
So Paul, when I read the email that Mrs. Gibson sent about the 50%, that was on Friday. It looks like it was directly talking about the, the federal adjustment aid that they had sent for pandemic. And so if there was 50% less of that, that would be 50% from the 1.4 million. But today, there was another comment by the governor that did talk about a potential 20% reduction to education in New York. If the federal government did not help with funding education in New York. So there were two different numbers, and again, both with a major impact, but.
So our plan here for, we have two more budget subcommittees scheduled before we come back and meet as a board on the 11th of May.
We currently have one scheduled, but the next week is available to schedule a follow-up after that as well, correct?
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to stop share.
Okay, we'll move, we do not have comments. From the audience, of course, so we'll go to Board of Committee Report, and I, committee recently, so I will see if Mary'd like to comment, Mrs..
I would, I would, thank you. Our Policy Committee, we met last week on April 14th via a Zoom meeting. And I want to thank everyone who participated in that meeting. It was new for all of us, and it went very smoothly. We had five policies that we reviewed, and. All on the agenda tonight. One is the second reading of a new policy, so it will be the formal adoption of this new policy. Is that right, Connie? Did I say that right? I can't see you. And then we're readopting one without change, and three are amend and re-adopt in our next policy meeting is May 4.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Crabtree, any comments on legislative or the next meeting?
The next meeting will be May 20th, 5 o'clock. This will be a very important meeting of, of this committee, because the school board will have finalized their budget. And hopefully we'll know more about an election date for this for the school board and for the budget. So May 20th.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to comment at all on the BOSI's report where you already did, you just did that? Okay.
No, I didn't. On the report each of you received on Friday, what I tried to do is highlight our directors and what they do. Are there any questions or comments about that report? So the next meeting of the O C M BOSI's, we've been doing it by Zoom for two months will be May 21st.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent Bowles?
Yes, I'd like to highlight, we had one of our middle school students make national TV last night on a show called Little Big Shots and has his own pickle business. And just again, the the students and the quality that we have in our district at such a high level and get some recognition, not only for that student, but that student's coming from our district and being on a national network is just amazing. And that's just the tip of the iceberg to see the quality of students and the education that comes out of our district. The other comment I have is every day I get emails from parents and from teachers. But I had an email today that I want to share. This parent is so thrilled at what teachers are providing her child. And they say they continue to teach, encourage, encourage, guide my son through Google Classroom. She has gone above and beyond making sure that my son has everything he needs. She is inspiring and reflective and a wonderful staff member to have in the district. And I wanted to say that publicly because these are the things that we're hearing and seeing, especially during these difficult times, because people are going out of their way to make sure our students have what they need and they're making connections with students. And we can't say that enough. This is a difficult situation, but trying to make sure we're encouraging and making those connections with our students and our families is is just essential. So that's the the last of my comment for today.
Okay, thank you. Any other Board of Education comments for the good of the order? Seeing none, we'll go into routine action items if I could get a motion and we'll do these roll call vote. If I could get a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting of April 6, 2020, motion made by Mr. Harrington, seconded by Mr. Marizio. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mrs. Gibson.
My computer froze up and I didn't get who seconded the motion. Could I have that?
Seconded by Mike Marizio, the motion made by George Harrington.
Okay. Thank you. Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
Aye.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Aye.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Aaron McDonald.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
And Mark Thorne.
Aye.
It is carried unanimously. I'd like a motion to group B and C together if I get a motion for that. Motion from Mr. Thorne, seconded from Mrs. McDonald. And B is consideration of classification of school placement of disabled students by the CSC, District CSC. And C was a classification of students in home instruction. Any discussion that is before us? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mrs. Gibson.
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
Aye.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Aye.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Aaron McDonald.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
And Mark Thorne.
Aye.
Hey, that is again, that's carried unanimously. And a motion for D, that's the acknowledgement of the business office reports for February 2020. Motion made by does somebody give me a wave there? Motion from George, seconded by Mr. Herman. Any discussion? Seeing none, a vote?
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
Aye.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Aye.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Aaron McDonald.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
And Mark Thorne.
Aye.
Okay, that again, that's carried unanimously. Discussion action items, I get a motion for the election to be on Doug at Courtland Madison BOSI's board members. Motion from Mr. Crabtree, seconded from Mr. Thorne. What they brought forward is we have, we have three candidates for three positions. I think you all saw that on the agenda. There is one replacing, you know, expired term of different candidate, others who are then running for their seats that expired. So not a lot of change there, not that I don't mean that badly, but are there any, any discussions on that?
I like to say a little bit about each of these people. Mike Murphy has been on representing Liverpool for many, many, many years. And we thank Mike for all that he's done for BOSI's. His replacement is Christopher Hockey. He was formerly, he's not on the board presently, but he was on the board for three years. Lisa O'Reilly has been for 14 years at BOSI's. She since 2006, she represents West Till, Len Court, Marcellus, Anadag and Salve. And God bless Joan Reeves, 39 years. She has been a representative from people for BOSI's. So I asked all school boards, by the way, are meeting tonight. Even if they don't meet on a Monday, they have to meet and Connie will send the results to our district clerk. So I'm hoping each of you will vote for these three people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Any other comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Gibson?
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
I'm abstaining.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Aye.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Aaron McDonald.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
And Mark Thorne.
Aye.
Hey, that is carried done. Eight ayes, one abstention. Thank you very much. Approval of the 2020 2021 BOSI's budget, administrative budget. Can I get a motion to put that before us? Motion from Bob Crabtree, seconded Mrs. McDonald, I saw your hand move. Any discussion?
I just like to talk a little bit about this.
Okay, please do.
Your only voting tonight, fellow board members, on the administrative budget. This is not on programs that our kids go to. It's just the administrative budget. The administrative budget this year will be 8,640,392. North Syracuse, based on, Don knows this, on the resident weighted average daily attendance. That's how we're charged the amount that that we will pay. We will be paying 352,000 this year, 847. That is an increase of $8,000 and it represents we pay with the other school districts, we out of 100%, we pay 16%. So I asked the board to please support this.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Gibson?
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Michael Marizio. Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Aye.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Aaron McDonald.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
And Mark Thorne.
Aye.
Okay, that again is carried unanimous. Thank you. A motion for the item C, universal pre-K updated contract with providers. Motion please, motion from just give me away motion from Mr. Harrington, seconded from Mr. Herman. That is before us, that is Learn As You Grow and Northminster preschool. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Gibson?
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Mike Marizio.
Aye.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Aye.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Aaron McDonald.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
And Mark Thorne.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That is carried in Mrs. Gibson, I will put drop in the mail the signatures for those tomorrow. I did receive those, thank you. Item D, recommendation to approve emergency procedure for weed application. If I can get a motion, motion from Mr. Thorne, seconded Miss McDonald. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Gibson, thank you.
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
Aye.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Aye.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Aaron McDonald.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
Mark Thorne.
Aye.
Okay, that is also carried unanimously. Thank you. I'd like a motion to group the policies E, F, G, H and I together. If I get a motion for that, put those before us. Motion from Miss Kruger, seconded Miss McDonald. Okay, those are before us. Mrs. Scanlon reported on those earlier. Do we have any questions? There's anything that anyone wants to pull out and do separately? Okay, seeing nothing, then Mrs. Gibson?
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
Aye.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Aye.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Aaron McDonald.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
Mark Thorne.
Aye.
Okay, that is carried unanimously. Thank you. We have two retirements to recognize. We have Deborah Midgley, a teaching assistant who retires with 13.7 years of service. And Nancy Stagnetti, teacher aid, retires with 21.7 years of service. So thanks to them for their service in North Syracuse. Instructional personnel report, A, if I get a motion to place that before us. Motion from Miss McDonald, second from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Gibson?
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
Aye.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Aye.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Aaron McDonald.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
Mark Thorne.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. B, support staff personnel, a motion to place that before us, please. Motion from Miss Kruger, second Mr. Thorne. Any discussion? No. Mrs. Gibson?
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
Aye.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Aye.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Aaron McDonald.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
And Mark Thorne.
Aye.
Thank you. That is carried unanimously. And item C, administrative personnel report, if we could place that before us. Motion from Mr. Marizio, seconded from Miss Scanlon. Said before us, any discussion? And this contains our new Allen Road principal. Okay. Mrs. Gibson?
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
Mr. Marizio?
Mike.
Aye.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Aye.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Aaron McDonald.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
Mark Thorne.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That's carried unanimously. I'm going to make a motion for executive session for the purposes of reviewing the employment history, employment history of 30 individuals with no action to follow. If I get a second on that. Second from Terry Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing none. We can wave our hands on that, I guess. Everybody okay? Okay, that's unanimous, going to executive session. In motion please for adjournment, motion from Miss Kruger, second from Mr. Harrington. No discussion, all in favor of adjournment? Aye.
Aye.
Any oppositions or abstentions? No, so that is unanimous. Thank you very much. We will meet over at the next link for
Give us some time.
And I'm going to move out of the sun because you guys probably are getting killed by the glare here.
Yep, I am.
Thank you.